I call to order the August 22nd, 2023 regular meeting of the Oberlin City School District Board of Education. Call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden?
Here.
Ms. Shum?
Here.
Ms. Stagel?
Here. I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved.
Second. Changes?
Any changes?
Yes, we do have a change on page two under Superintendent Consent Items, Item C. It should be 20,0039301 instead of 29,000.
That's a good direction for the change.
That's a good, good direction. And that's for the carpeting of the library at the middle school.
So that's C. Oh, 20,300. Okay, yeah, okay.
Anything else?
No.
Then let's call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And we'll move on to Citizens Concerns on Agenda Items. Do we have anyone here or anything?
Nothing submitted electronically.
Great, then we will move on to News of Note, the Superintendent's Report and Facility Update.
Thank you. I'd like to announce the Summer 2023 E-Magazine has been sent out to all staff, families in Oberlin business. It'll be sent out at 5:00 PM today. There are hard copies available in the back, and we also will have some available in local areas of the community as well. This is, yes, directly in front of you, gave it to the board members. We have E-Magazine coming out as well. We'd like to thank our sponsors in the E-Magazine. We'll also have another magazine coming out December and also the spring. That one will be coming out through the regular mail. Next, we have District Open Doors will be held from 4:00 to 6:00 this Thursday, August 24th. During Open Doors, there's opportunity for parents and community members and teachers to meet and greet each other. We'll have vendors, we'll have organizations and clubs will be located in and around OES. The Boosters, Band Boosters, will be selling hot dogs, chips, and drinks for a nominal fee, and OHS Cheerleaders will host a bake sale. Both will be inside OES Cafeteria. We have the VF Art American Legion will be there as well. We have local Oberlin Community Services will be there, passing out school supplies. I'd like to thank them for their support. And students, we have an opportunity to get school supplies there at the same time. I believe they have to be residents of...
They have to be registered as Oberlin City School students, and they should have already pre-registered. We have, I have been shopping for the past week putting kids together. I don't have, we are very specific to the kids we get, so if you did not register, whatever's left over will be given to the schools, to district.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank Oberlin Community Services. We also like to thank United Way, Mercy, and Tammy for donating school supplies and other, the Lorraine County Credit Union as well, so other people that donate school supplies for our students. Thank you very much, and our students really appreciate them. Fall sports have begun. We'd like to encourage all community members as well as families to come to our fall activities. Volleyball and football, excellent football game by our Phoenix students. Fortunately, we did not win, but it was a great opportunity and a great game for them as well. All of our fall sports are up to a great start this year. I'd like to announce to the board, currently our enrollment is up by about 30 to 40 students or so, so we do have students still coming in and registering. And if you have not registered yet, please come in, because we're ready, we're ready to go for kindergarten, all the way to our preschool, all the way to 12th grade. We especially like to thank our custodial and transportation staff. Our custodial staff did a phenomenal job cleaning the buildings, waxing the floors, getting everything ready for our students on Monday. We have painting going on in new classrooms. The floor is looking excellent, so they've done a phenomenal job. Our transportation group, wonderful group of individuals as well. They worked this summer, and right now they're working on routes to get out to our parents so our students can know where to be picked up at. They'll make phone calls all this week, over the weekend, just to make contact with our parents. They'll also be at Open Doors as well, and they'll have a table there. At the table, we have some coloring pictures for them to do as well, and we'll have a bus there so students can get on the bus and learn a little bit about the bus procedure before school starts. We also will have a fire department and a police department will be at Open Doors as well. I'd like to announce to the board too, we're so far, we're fully staffed, that's up to date, fully staffed on teachers, so we do have everyone there, and we also have a couple of new teachers here as well, and our new principal, our Oberlin Elementary, Ms. Weber. I'm not sure if you'd like to say anything for new teachers? No? Okay.
Sure, just said hi class.
Said hi. We've hired about 15 to 16 new teachers this year. Great group of teachers. They're eager. We had our first opening welcome day back. Exciting. All the teachers are ready to come back, eager to get in the classroom and set the classrooms up for our students. That concludes my report, and next we'll have Facilities, unless anyone have any questions? We have Mr. Ibel, I'd like to hear a Facilities update.
Again, thanking our custodians. So I'm gonna be quick tonight. I say that every time, and I will be, I promise. The two things I wanted to talk about were upcoming things on the board agenda. First, the roofing project at the high school. You know, we hired TDA to help us put together a bid package of what we want the repairs to look like. So we did that, we went out to bid. We brought you a contract that is for four sections of the roof. We put out to bid five sections, but we wanted a 10-year warranty on it. That was our goal. One of the areas, they didn't, they didn't think they would be able to keep it within any kind of reasonable budget to do a 10-year warranty on that area. So we're bringing to you tonight the contract for areas 1, 2, 3, and 5 for like $92,500 around there. But again, that is with a 10-year warranty. The other area, the area 4, which is the 200 wing, which has some leakage, we're gonna work with them to the company, West Roofing, to do some repairs on it, to do the best we can to patch it up without spending a real, real high-dollar amount to rip it off and put all new on. So we're gonna be band-aiding that one a little bit this year and making kind of an assessment on it for moving forward. The second thing is re-carpeting Langston Middle School Library. The rumor is that carpet's been there since...
It's like a wave in the floor or anything?
We had, we had a librarian before who made it into kind of a river, which worried me too, but it looked great, I guess. Hear tell is that's been there since 1984. I'm not sure. We've stretched it a lot of times.
Um, I...
Because I would've been there in 85.
Yeah, I would've been there in 84. I, I wanna say it was...
Still the green carpet. Well, we've, again, we've had people in to stretch it again, and I think it's stretched out to its limit. So that's the other contract is for affordable floors, to come in and re-carpet tile it with the blue carpet tile like you've seen us doing other areas for the $20,000, but that's a big space with lots of things. So those are our two.
When is that one scheduled for?
We don't have it. We have to approve this tonight, and then I will contact them tomorrow and say, let's get in here as quickly as we can. The problem is they probably won't work on weekends, and we might have to close the library down for two or three days and work around getting it in, because we want it, we want it done.
Right, we want it done. My only concern was, I believe the carpet squares get glued down.
Yeah.
That, that...
Yeah, he's, I will, yep, I will deal with that with the company for sure.
Great.
We'll make sure we don't fumigate anybody.
Excellent.
That's it. That's a record. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ibel, for working on those. We appreciate you. Thank you very much. Concludes my report.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to action items. I'll entertain a motion to approve Board Items A and B.
So moved. Second.
Board Item A includes approval of the June regular session meetings, minutes, I'm sorry, minutes. And Item B is appointment of the OSBA delegate and alternate for 11/14/23 Annual Business Meeting and OSBA Conference. And I think we have to entertain...
Do we know anybody's going to that?
Farrah and I are both going to go, so she'll be the delegate this year. I was the delegate last year.
Okay.
It'll be fun.
And alternate, I think we wanted Farrah to be the delegate and you're the alternate, correct?
Yeah, I'll be the alternate. Do we have any other questions? Then we can call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes. Okay, so we'll move on to Treasurers' Items. I'll entertain a motion to approve Treasurers' Items A and B.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Treasurers' Report. We ended the year with, we have two months to do, so I will move quickly. June, the end of our fiscal year, we ended with $15,965,717.62. We did have an adjustment for payroll because we paid on July 1st, so I had to have money moved over. Outstanding checks were $78,638.8. Everything balanced. For the month of July, we ended with $18,594...
Eighteen million.
Eighteen million, five, 594,685 dollars. Big numbers.
It was a pause like...
And then outstanding checks, we had $94,019.67 with no other outstanding money, so we got our real estate tax dollars in and our income tax, so that's why July was up. Other than that, I provided you with the June and July reports. I'll just go over the July reports for all funds.
All funds?
Yes, all funds. General Fund is at $11,521. We do have the Lunchroom Fund, which we had bills in July to pay for June and summer school, so that's why that fund is negative. We didn't get reimbursements back yet. The state grants were positive by $988, and then the federal grants, all the cash advances were in, and we have received that money, $178,965. We did, we still do have the NEXUS for 2.5. The building project is closed out. We ended up with $2,940,462, and we just got yesterday approval of our $20,000 grant from the Ohio Diesel for the car chargers. We finally jumped through all the hoops. Me and Steve has been working on it for two years, and it costs us a little over $10,000, but we'll get $20,000 back, so. But yeah, so the project, once we put that money in there, we do have a couple other expenses coming out of there for things that would qualify for building at the new elementary, so. But yes, the final balance should be, like I said, the outstanding was 71,906, so once that's done, we will be right around $2.9 million left in the construction fund. Any questions? Keep it short. And then we did have one donation. We had one donation from the class of 1990 for $100 for a class bench. We were $100 short, and we had an anonymous donation to make up the $100 for the bench that's now here at the elementary. And that's all I have.
I wanna offer a special word of thanks to the class of 1990 for doing that. They dedicated it the same day that we had that pancake breakfast in the Fall Sports Fun, and it was pouring down rain when they did the dedication, but, and I was inside cleaning up for pancakes, so I didn't have to go there. I really appreciate that they did that. Another buddy bench.
Excellent. Do we have any other questions? Okay, we can call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So we'll move on to Superintendent Consent Items. I'll entertain a motion to approve Superintendent Consent Items A through P5.
Second.
Okay, Superintendent Consent Items, A, approval of a nurse for our summer program. ESY, that's extended school year, summer program that we had this summer. Item B is West Roofing. We just heard update for Ms. Ibel. Item C is attractive kitchens and flooring. That's the Lanes and Middle School Media Center carpet. Item D is approval of the Educational Alternative Service. That's EA. We do not have any students currently going this year, but that's just a contract we annually approve if we have students attending there. Item E is approval of AVI food systems denim. That's approving of the AVI contract for this year. Item F is approval of 23/24 service agreement with Achievement Centers for children. We have a student attending Achievement Center. Item G is Keys to Literacy PD. That's out of our literacy grant for Lanes and Middle School. Additional materials to support reading. Item H is approval of a two-year contract for the 23 and the 24, or at Oberlin College for use of the stadium. They charge us $1,000 per game, so we have 10 games on there for two years. Item I is approval of 23/24 PSI services as psychologists to provide special services and screening for special students. We do have a school psychologist on staff, however, this is a service that's beyond her reach. Item J, Spectrum Transportation. We have students attending Spectrum. Item K is impractical resolution for Lutheran High School West. Item L is approval of professional service contract with Dandy Nicola, help us with our projects. Item 2 is transportation service to Oberlin College. Item M is approval of 23/24 student handbooks for our schools. Item N is approval of the second reading of policies. As we continue our policy review, I'd like to thank our policy committee, policy committee members, long hours they've put in and continue to put in long hours since we worked through them. Item O is approval of the first reading and discussion of the following audit review policies as well. So it's additional policies for the first reading. Item P is Personnel Report. We have some resignations for item 1, item 2, some position changes, item 3 of leave absence. Item 4 is employment of some of our new staff members. A couple of them you met tonight. Like to thank and welcome them aboard as well. They went through a, most of them went through a three-day new teacher orientation. Item 5 is supplemental contracts for sports. Our volleyball coach and cheerleading coach, and soccer, and several other coaches. Request approval of the Item A through P5.
I actually have a question, but not remember what it is. Okay, so in G, or in H, you said that was for two years for 23 and 24, but then I and J are also 23/24. Is that, isn't that the 23/24 school year for the second two?
Yes.
Yes, item H should read 23 probably slash 24, and it's for two years. The other ones are for 23/24 school year.
So just my curiosity is, do we have any challenges? I mean, I know with, with AVI, we have multi-year contracts, but I just didn't know that with the way the funding works, can we, can we do multi-year like that?
Yes.
So this...
Yeah, they gave us a two-year agreement, and, right, normally we do 23/24, but the agreement actually says for, for them, it's the 20, for the college, it's year 23 and 24. We're renting the facility for this year and then...
This fall and next fall.
Next fall.
So that's 10 football games, five this year, five next.
Five next year, yes. And all the football games are in the agreement.
Well, so how, how far along are we on reviewing all of the, all the policies?
We have another session scheduled.
Right.
And hopefully, we should be about done. And then we'll have the fall. That just came out.
We have new ones coming guys as well.
Regular fall updates, so...
Yeah, we've done them out of order.
Yes.
So I couldn't say how many sections we have left, but we started with the most difficult sections that we thought we would need the most updating for. Feel like the section that we've been working on, the 2000 section, is the one that we had the most discussion about in our meetings. But yeah, it's, it's moving right along. It is, it's just a lot.
Is anything in the discussion something we should know?
I feel like I took a note for you.
Oh, you did, that's right.
I did.
I need to write this down.
I can't remember what it was.
Ann's gonna ask me.
Oh, it was, we rescinded 21/20 and 21/30 because they're covered in other places. And that was just a question that had come up in other parts that we had gone through.
Right.
Because, you know, we don't want to randomly rescind things, but it was because they're covered in other places.
Well, I, I really appreciate it, all, all the hard work. It's, it's a, it's a big document.
And I think it's been great for Farrah and I, I feel like there's things that I've learned, even though I read through most of that when I first started. There's just things that I've learned or things that have come up that I thought, oh, we don't actually do that quite that way. So it's been, it's been good to really pick through the whole thing.
And it's been decades.
Yes.
I'm sure you can tell from some of the language.
Yes, a lot of it was 96.
Yeah.
Probably the last time they did a big...
Okay, do we have any other questions? Then we can call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes. So let's move on to Board Updates. Does anyone have updates?
So we did get an update. I don't know if you remember, several months ago, I, I shared information I learned at the JVS Retreat, but then also in talking to David and Bob, that the auditor of state has finally now made their determination about the role that employees of the district can play when it comes to soliciting funds. And so, I mean, basically, it's, they're not allowed to have an opinion, one way or another, about whether or not we should approve funding in order to do the job that they're meant to do. So if they're passionate about the schools and then like what we're doing in the programming, they can't show that. All they can do is provide the facts. And I, I, if, if there were nuances from the actual determination, I'll leave that up to you guys to share, but it's, it really handcuffs you guys in particular.
Yes.
Because you are the ones that really understand the need and can convey it, but it's gonna be up to the community to actually convince each other about why it matters. Did I miss anything important?
Nope.
I haven't gotten through the final final.
So essentially, what you're saying...
Are you saying board members are not?
We are technically...
We are not employees.
Yes, board members can be, but like...
We are technically employees of the, of the school district.
Well, it's, 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 we...
It's weird.
We are only employees, like, in effect during this meeting.
Right.
Right, that's the only thing we're...
You're elected officials.
...compensated for. With them in particular, there's no beginning and ending time to when they work.
Right.
So it's the, it puts the onus on them to say, to demonstrate any advocacy that they do was done on their own time, which they can't really do, because if they get a call at 2:00 in the morning, they're gonna be doing school business at 2:00 in the morning.
Right.
Right? So it's, they, it...
So, so everyone except for board members who was employed by the Oberlin City Schools. No, but there's wiggle worm with that.
Administration.
Administrations can't do.
Teachers usually have a beginning and end time. You can say, well, they're starting this time, 8:00 to 3:30 or 4:00.
Let's be careful how we say that.
Absolutely.
Teachers don't have a beginning and end time, right? We know that teachers put their heart and soul to their teaching effort.
Absolutely, they work well and beyond.
However, the state recognizes.
The state recognizes that they have a start and stop time. However, administration is like, oh, no, they're here 24/7, sorry, guys.
Exactly. You, you are the district.
Yeah. Hmm, okay, that's interesting.
It's, it's politics. I mean, they're playing games. They're, they're, they're really, it's undermining public education is what it's doing, but...
Okay, you said, what I said, but nicer.
Yes, exactly. That's my joke. Diplomat.
And there's more meetings we're gonna have. I think the ESC will have one on Friday. There's more legislation coming out. Western and, Western and Heard will have something coming out as well. So attend a workshop on exactly what we can do, what we can't do, and like Ann said, it's pretty much where we can be part of committee, but we can't get the committee running, where they recommend that we kind of stay a little away from it at a time because our start and end time. I have no idea why.
I'd be curious to see if there's any discussion of, of putting limits on when, I mean, doctors, doctors are on call certain hours of the day, but not 24/7. I think it'd be appropriate to, you know, to consider if, if there's a way to say, you know, Dr. Hall, you're on call these hours. Bob, you're on call these hours. You have other administrators who can be on call at other times. Yeah, I think that's something that we, you know, we should have considered long ago.
Which may be a gray area, because my staff will probably tell you, I'm shooting emails out to them at 11:00, 12:00.
You should be scheduled sending those.
They're fresh in my head, I gotta get them out.
Anyway, I'd be curious if other, if any districts take that route.
And if it makes any difference.
Right.
That's the other thing, because really, what it's gonna take is making change at Columbus.
Right.
Because it's not, I mean, if, if we could get a legal opinion that any kind of confines, but I, I can't imagine an administrator actually adhering to that.
Well, it's something I think, you know, I think we should consider, even aside from that period. Bob has a right type of life. David has a right type of life.
And I get upset when Dr. Hall answers his phone when he's on vacation.
Down in Florida, I'm not here yet.
Anyway, I think it's something to consider. Not, not, not today's agenda.
So Endowment has a meeting coming up on Wednesday, so those applications will open soon for the fall grant cycle. And Finance, do we have a committee?
We have one on the 30th, yes.
Next week, the 30th?
First in person since COVID. Wow.
JVS, I'm pretty sure what Dr. Hall said, I mean, Dr. Hall, Dr. Fairclough said last week was that they're expecting to have, their, their enrollment is right around 2,000. So they're gonna be one of the biggest high schools, if not the biggest high school in the county.
Yeah.
Maybe, I don't know how big Lorraine is, but...
Around Lorraine.
So... Not, they're not the first, they'll be like top three.
Well, and what has really made the difference is that they do have ninth and 10th grade, that those are really picking up, so. Which gives the kids time to kind of get more involved and see where their interests really are rather than deciding really fast.
That's good.
Yeah.
Do we have, how many kids do we have over there this year?
I'm not sure. I can get to number 40. Pretty accurate. I know a lot of our freshmen, accepted about 20 or so freshmen over this year. Larger number than previous years, and a lot of our freshmen have elected to come back for academics and for half a day. So that helps as well.
It's a good blend.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm 100% behind that. I, I think figuring out what school is going to match a kid's interests and abilities.
Great, so we will move on to hearing of the public on other items.
Nobody signed. Nope.
Great, so our future meetings, September 12th, we have a work session here at 6:00 PM, then September 26th will be our regular meeting, also here, and October 24th, a regular meeting, also here. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Call the roll. Call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.